What do you feed them?
Um.
Oh, yeah.
And where do you get the approach?
I'm just.
So here's something weird. My best friend can't eat meat that's been raised on corn. Because he's like sensitive to corn. So a lot of chicken he can't eat. And so I'm always looking for pork that's been raised on something other than corn. Yeah, it's worth it. Isn't that interesting? Just something to think about.
You can, you can raise them, um. Like, is he okay with it if they're fed like pumpkins and stuff?
I think so, yeah. And I, doesn't that add more nutrition to the, to those other meat?
It makes it taste different. Yeah.
That's really cool. Well, we got plenty of.
What about potatoes? Can he, uh?
I think, well, it's a big.
Hi, Manny, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, doing well. Another beautiful day in the village.
I know, it's gorgeous. I saw your dad.
Oh, you did, lucky you.
He was working farm.
Oh, wasn't he?
And driving fair.
And texting all at the same time.
Yeah, well, it's always, I was talking to the lady with your daughter. She's like, I saw the truck coming right now. We need to step off. I know, because he usually texts me every once in a while. Is it?
He does. Yesterday I tried to wave at him, he couldn't even see me.
It was all true at your wedding. We talked about reading the book. And the iPhone.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We could probably get some.
It's all smoke, all the bacon is.
And is any MSG added to the sausage or anything?
You have to for preservative. But then it would go bad. You can, uh, we have a guy that's allergic to either MSG or. What else is in smoking? A grown boy.
Nit- nitrate, nitrates.
Yes, he cannot have that.
Wow, and so you do something for him or?
So evils. I don't know if you've heard of them.
Oh, because you know, she's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's really right there face.
Okay.
And they are one of the new which is naturally smoked without.
You gotta get T-shirts.
Bye, bye, man. Thank you.
That's really good.
And after Maggie, but.
He, no, he's not feeling well since the surgery.
That's classic. Oh, that is a great card. Isn't it wonderful? Yeah. Those fish are just too cute to eat. There's some sweet.
It's a spirit. Get past firsthand experience. He's got.
I texted him.
Yeah, I do.
I emailed him earlier to remind him as well.
Bacon, sausage, and soul. Yeah, sounds great. Your card, so he has one, that's good. We'll go for one at home. That'll bother the jury.
And she needs a smile for the day, so look at it.
For the next time it says, hey, what do you want for dinner?
Uh, six forty-five. Call the daughter, please.
Brian's right here. Uh, Michelle, my allegiance in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Uh, roll call, please.
Okay, Patton. Ring.
Yes.
Chapman.
Here.
Fox.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Sheerheart. Absent and Drake.
Here.
Thank you.
Number four, approval of the agenda, October nine, two thousand and four. This is just updating. The ordinances on disabled cars and noxious weeds. I'd like to make a long, real creepy agenda. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Public comment on the adoption of the ordinances regarding non-motorized vehicles and noxious weed. No old business, no new business. Uh, I'll let, uh, Ally take it from here on the first one. A, amending the village code. You can't do inoperable motor vehicles.
Absolutely, so everyone should have received these last month. Um, if no one has any questions about it, the only real question we have would be under ten point three prohibition. Uh, the council needs to decide the number of dismantled vehicles that they are allowing in a yard. Any opinions on that?
So the question is. The, well, the new ordinance includes a note that we have to decide the number of allowed vehicles that are inoperable. That's.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And the number of days. And number of days? Yeah, it's ten right now.
Nope, this, yeah, okay.
Um, is the council deciding the number of days with the number of vehicles or both?
Well, you guys can do any, either or. I think it's your ordinance.
Okay, that's what I agree with.
Yep.
Okay, so, um.
How many vehicles can you work on in a time? One. Ten days. And then I would imagine if they were to contact the ordinance officer, he would say, oh, you're, you're making progress on it. From there. Do we have to put that in the, and would we have to put that in the wording to?
Nope, um, you can, let's see, you can add it to it. You'd be like, um, as is with the addition, with the contingency of one dismantled car in ten days.
Well, I guess what I'm getting is that in past, our ordinance officer was more than willing to work with whomever. And it wasn't ten days on the spot. If they were working wrenching on it and there was communication between two parties, it was. Okay. That's what we've done in the past. It's been an unwritten rule that if they're aware of the situation, they're making progress on it. So that's why I said ten and one, ten days and one vehicle.
Well, and I think that this does not apply to, let's, let me see this. And shall not apply to motor vehicles validly licensed. Um, and so, you know, I think if we're looking at somebody who's working on their vehicle, typically that'll be licensed. You know, they're fixing their car or whatever. But when they just park them and let them sit and let the grass grow up around them and let things nest in them, um, that's, you know, that's an issue, so. So I think ten days is reasonable. How about you?
I do, Bill.
I think so. Right, you're, you're, you're a mechanic.
Okay, well, that is how the ordinance is written now, so you could just vote on it.
And then. And then the other question is how many?
I say one. Well, it's like, here, the council should decide the number. Yeah.
We can leave it case by case basis.
Well.
No, this is.
Taking parts from one car to make another car operable, you'd have two cars.
Right, but one, I, I think that we don't want to allow people that has one junk car on the property.
Yeah, yeah, right. But there's a time limit here.
Right.
If you're working and you get it done in ten days or less, you're okay.
So Mike, what are you thinking, ten and two?
No, no, no.
No, no, I don't see any reason for a change. Oh, yeah, I'd say leave it ten and one. Yeah. Okay, good.
The ordinance officer can, some, or some improvement.
All right. All right, so that's settled.
Good, and then.
That was it, right?
Yeah, for the, um, inoperable motor vehicles. And then for noxious weeds, um. If everyone's okay with it? Unless anyone has any questions.
Is this the one that we use for lawns?
Yeah.
I don't like the, because it doesn't say anything about lawns at all other than cutting these quote unquote noxious weeds. Okay, here's one. I see, so basically what we're doing is we're giving them a notice to cut their lawn. And it's under noxious weed, which there's like six listed, seven.
It lists families, it's not specific.
Right, but I'm like, there's certain ones that are listed.
Well, this is based off the state statute. If you read like the actual Michigan state statute, it says the same definition.
Yeah, and I, I was just wondering if we could clean that up a little bit so that it wouldn't include their yard instead of, because like if somebody looks at it and says, well, I don't have any noxious weeds in the yard. I, my grass is eight inches tall, but that, I mean, it just doesn't explain.
That's a good point, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And I do know that this original, you know, that the, the law by the state of Michigan is from the nineteen forties. And, uh, we might want to just take a closer look at it or the.
Right, or add something to it, you know, so it.
More clear.
Make it clear that they may have to cut their lawn or, you know, not just.
Right.
So what do we want, Brian, just, just.
Go on. Also, the, the noxious weed incident were subject that brought up during the spring as the bees pollinate from those, some of those weeds.
Right.
People were no mow, no mow maybe.
Mm-hmm.
And I wasn't going to say anything about this, but I do want to just sort of put in that, um, when the village enforced the noxious weed ordinance, the last time, which was before the pandemic, um, a commercial property was cited, given a warning, and rather than cutting, they poured ground up all over the whole thing and killed everything. And I just, um, I think that, you know, as we look at the fragility of parts of our environment now, it's certainly changed from the, the time when a lot of these original, um, ordinances were, were developed. And if we're going to take a look at other aspects of it, you know, such as indicating that we're talking about a residential lawn or area around or, you know, being more specific about that. Because I sure don't want to penalize somebody for considering the environment and the pollinators.
So are we going to ask Brian Graham, residential laws, um, just our enforcement, June one? Or do we just leave it up to the discretion of the ordinance enforcement officer like we have in the past? You just tell, that's what we've done in the past is just, we started in June.
I'll try to, except for, except they just cleaning up each other's.
All right.
So do we agree that we probably need to take this back to the drawing board a bit?
Sure.
Something about, um. We'll already done round it for now.
And, um, but inoperable vehicles, we're all good with that.
Ten one. All right, let's move on to action item.
Just a second. Oh, let's have it on the table now. This concerns noxious weed. It does not concern, uh, mowing your lawn.
Yeah.
If grass gets real tall. Are we going to do anything about that?
That's what.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, that's residence and commercial property alike. Uh, but this only says weeds. Well, if they don't have weeds, but their lawn is ten inches tall.
What is the term for this? There's a term for this if we repeat back what a council member already said. It's against parliamentary procedures to say the same topic twice with the same points, I mean. Yeah, go ahead.
I lost Mitchman in Congress. What did you say? So, okay, so, right, okay, so we're discussing this now and the issues that we have with it. And so we need to table this, correct? Is that what, okay. So we need to table the adoption of this ordinance pending language changes and, and considering different.
The noxious weed or?
The noxious, the noxious is just obnoxious. Anyway, so.
Okay, so we're tabling nine B.
Tabling the weeds.
Tabling the weed.
We need the motion for that.
Now we're moving on to action item. Oh, okay, so we're gonna close discussion, new business. Move on to number nine, action item. Nine A, action item, approval of amending our village code, chapter eleven, dismantled or inoperable motor vehicles are ordinance number two of twenty twenty-four. I'd like to make the motion, hold it. Uh, roll call, please.
Ring.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Drake.
Yeah.
Sheerheart and Pat in our absence.
All right, nine B, we're gonna attempt to table this one. So I'm gonna make a motion, Ally, tell me if I do this incorrectly, just checking. I'd like to make a motion to table uh, amending village code, chapter ten, noxious weed with ordinance number three of twenty-four. Second, and then we're gonna do a roll call, Ally, on that then?
Yep, ring.
Yeah.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fox.
Yeah.
Tyler.
Yes.
Drake.
Yeah. All right. So now, public comment as it relates to amending the village code, chapter eleven, dismantled vehicles or amending the village code, chapter ten, noxious weed. All right. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Under the special meeting.
Special meeting, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll give it Brian on this one. Vote here.
Perfect timing.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. Tyler, Fox. How do you want to share, President? Well, Brian isn't having a.
Is that Brian?
No, there's not one in the office.
Sure, honey, he's like super.
Oh, I know.
No, 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 no.
Might be a while here. Pretty big. Somebody has a fancy.
There's a fancy chair.
There's a spot next to me. Yep, it's over there, uh, we might have ran out, yeah.
All right. I can vote to give it to my guy.
I don't.
And I'll slide over the ransom to you, you know?
Yeah, that was just a public hearing.
Just don't send your guy very quietly. It's all I ask. What's your, uh, Jeremy planted, Jeremy's last name is, I have to plan it, it shows us. The, uh, yes.
Oh, she has one.
Yeah.
Okay.
We planned all those.
Yeah.
The, and she's sounding pretty. What's that? They're worse than they ever were.
Except in the other.
Oh, actually, I think I already have all this. I already have this information if you want that. I have the one up sitting right there for everyone, too.
It's not the cost, but.
Yeah.
Send me all the time.
Seven o'clock, all in favor, please.
Want to do the question again?
All right, good question. Take it away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ally.
Yes, ring.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Fox.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Drake.
Here.
Sheerheart, absent, Patton, absent.
All right. Number four, approval of the agenda, October nine, twenty twenty-four. Brian. Oh, yeah.
Where, where are we looking at?
Eight P, parts and open spaces. Brian is not here because his hand is bothering him.
Okay, so. So we need to amend the agenda to take out the report under eight.
Eight. All right. Did you get that, Ally?
Yes, and are we comfortable with moving forward with his action item G without him here? Or should we cut that?
That's the campground one, right?
It is.
Yeah, we're not changing anything, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We're not. Approved seasonal and annual site rates the same rate as the twenty twenty-four. Sort of leaving it the same all, okay, there's no changes. I'm comfortable with that.
That's fine, I'll make sure.
Thank you. Any other?
additions.
Is what's the leations?
I move that we approve the agenda for October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, favors, say aye.
Aye.
Number five, approval of the minutes, August twenty, uh, fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
Well, that seems so long ago.
All in favor of approval of the minutes of August fourteen, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
We got the other special meeting, number six, approval of a special meeting minutes from September sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Well, second, all in favor of approval of a special meeting from September sixteen, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, public comment, um. Antle County Jail Revitalization, Antle County Sheriff. Uh, Janet, I see you're here, you're gonna step up to replace their thing.
All right, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Janet Coop. I am the deputy administrator for the county. I'm actually from the sheriff's office. But I'm out of there today. I've got materials for new folks. Um, I'll try to keep to step three minutes. The, uh, those of you that are aware, um, Public Safety Center is on the ballot for November fifth. This is a construction bond. This looks harder, I should have done this better. Twenty years, point five six mils. That is the maximum amount that ever be levied by the commissioners.
Well, this passes without.
For the current jail, um, if anybody's found a jail tour, it's seventy years old. It's out of date, it's deficient, it doesn't serve the needs of the community, it's not safe. And it doesn't allow for the space for the programming to do many of like diversions, alternatives to incarceration and any mental health treatments that we, we could do for, excuse me, um, for inmates or for post inmate treatment. None of that is, are things that we can do right now. With Public Safety Center, um, that would all be possible. But it is an expensive thing, thirty-two million, thirty-two and a half million dollars is the estimated price tag. It is a lot of money without a doubt. I'm not here to advocate for your vote, I'm just here to inform. So on the ballot, thirty-two and a half million dollars is the total price tag. What's on the ballot language, on your source book, page three, I believe it is, is the ballot language. That language says twenty-five and a half million dollars. Because the, the county would be putting in seven million dollars, kind of a down payment, so to speak. So the twenty-five and a half is what is the bond amount is on the ballot. So that's twenty years, point five six. But the commissioners are, are very intent on never levying at full point five six. Um, the point five six is kind of like a, uh, getting a cosigner for your mom and dad on a car loan, hope to never use it. If, if, if this is approved. Again, I'm not here to advocate, I'm just here to inform. And is, if the county's finances stay the way they are, which everybody hopes they will, they're very quite positive right now. Commissioner Ruben is very good with keeping our budget, um, nice and tight. We would, the, the board would likely never have to levy any of that. But it's kind of a financial security blanket, and again, it's just financial guardrails for the state of the county's finances. Hopefully that will never have to be levied. But we'll just have to, it would just, we just have to see. But again, the current jail, it's not in compliance, it's not safe. We can't do the things, um, that could be done with the two Public Safety Center. Location would be just adjacent to the county building, the, the courthouse, just directly to the east. Um, that location is there and it's ready to go. It's all, all primed. Um, again, it's the township by township basis, um, what would hit your property taxes varies a lot depending on where you live with the taxable value, of course. But for Central Lake Township, on page twenty-four, um, it's, it's noted. Central Lake Township, average taxable, average taxable value for the residential properties, what you're, you're hit to your property taxes. If you would be average in Central Lake Township, forty-three dollars and nine cents a year. That's the maximum amount at the point five six, buddy. Oh, two minutes.
You got it or not?
I, if.
I can exercise discretion, keep going.
Okay, thank you, just a little bit more. Um, so the Public Safety Center, and only one third of it would be the jail, is the concept right now. And it was, um, the other two thirds would be the jail administration, um, sheriff's office, detectives, emergency management would get wrapped into that. Dispatch would be in there. Everybody would be under one roof in addition to a training room, which would be fantastic facility for, for the fire departments, um, ambulance, um, mutual training exercises would be hugely beneficial in addition to the social services folks that could, that could be using. Sinuses. And, um. It's the efficiency is, is a huge thing. Um, it was, uh, one of the, um, deputies was asked at a recent meeting, it's like, what does it mean to you folks? Having everybody under one roof. And, um, Deputy Geshet said, it's like, well, without having to, if you were in the jail and you, you got a call and you had to leave, you wouldn't have to go to the other building. Um, you wouldn't have to, have to gather your equipment, it would all be right there. It could save thirty, thirty seconds to a minute, goes just off the top of its head, which doesn't sound like much. But if you're the one calling nine-one-one, it can mean everything. That's one of, one of the definite advantages. In addition to all the programming and the mental health facilities that we could offer for inmates. And it's not about, it's not about the inmates, it's about the community. This is a KDA project, and that's why it's a November fifth vote, and it's up to you folks to decide whether or not this gets approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And I will happily sit through the meeting and answer any questions afterwards if anybody wants, wants to.
Uh, public comment, Jerus.
Yeah. Uh, mostly you know that I sit on the nine-one-one board for Antle County. And, uh, we're hoping that within about the next ten to twelve days, the new nine-one-one tower will be constructed at Antle County. And, uh, we're really hoping that calls to Central Lake specifically will be better.
That's a good word.
Exactly. So, uh, yeah, I've, I've talked to Scott Barrett about this issue a couple of times. And, uh, we're really hopeful that with the new tower, the footings are poured, and then we're hoping to put the tower up in the next couple of weeks, so. Yeah, we'll have to wait and see, but, uh, really hopeful that nine-one-one calls to Central Lake, especially the Village of Central Lake and our school here. And I mean, uh, Mr. Barrett makes no, makes no mistake that, like, the biggest dead zone is around the school, so that's always a concern. So we're hopeful that, that, that new nine-one-one tower will be better for that. Also, I sit on the, uh, North Country Community Mental Health. And we're dealing with a couple of budgetary issues on that, uh, committee right now. Uh, the Lansing Legislature appropriated just over a hundred million dollars to serve mental health needs in Michigan and sent that to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And they just, uh, have that in their account and they are, uh, sending that out to the mental health organizations, so. We're about three million dollars short right now. And we're hopeful that it'll release that and, uh, we, uh, will be able to continue serving the people that have. we, uh, will be able to continue serving the people that have the greatest needs. It's still a, a bit of a concern of mine that the main people that we serve are what we call people who are in crisis or severe. And I would really like to, to have some sort of way to help those before they get that bad, because when you get to be that bad, it's bad for them, and it's very expensive both, so. With that, I'll be quiet unless there's any questions for me.
All right, thanks, Jerus, appreciate it. Public comment.
All right.
I'll close public comment. Uh, eight reports, um, president's report, um, I've got nothing that's embedded within today's meeting. Uh, eight B, police report, I see Nick's in the back.
Hello.
All right, Nick, thanks for making it out, we appreciate it.
Not at all.
All right, this is Nick Strobel, he's our part-time officer since Scott's retirement, he has been taking over on a part-time basis, doing a great job, I really appreciate stepping up like that.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late, I was working my other job, so that's why I'm sneaking in the back here. Um, so Scott retired, uh, back, was it August 10th was the last day he was here? So, from the 100 and, let's see, uh.
I think his last day was September 10th.
Oh, September 10th, that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, so from September to August, you can see a drastic drop in the number of calls that Central Lake is able to handle. Um, that's just due to having two part-time officers instead of a full-time. So if you look at the, the breakdown, um, from September, we had, uh, I mean, from August, we had 24 stops, which then dropped down to zero from, into September. Um, so we're working on getting back to par of where we were, there's been a little bit of a learning curve, uh, but we're trying to figure out the best way for us to handle the road, you know, going from full-time coverage to a couple of days a week, it's hard to maintain the same numbers. Um, but we are still active, me and the other part-time officer, we're coming in as much as we can. Um, and once this learning curve, we, uh, learn to navigate it, we should be back up to par. So we would just request that you bear with us while we get our footing until we get something more permanent. Does anybody have any questions for me in regards to what's going on with the village, police lines? All right, well.
Thanks, Nick.
When I'm here, open doors, so come on in, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best.
All right, thanks, Nick. Uh, DPW report, John Shucks.
Yeah, as usual, you got some highlights of the, the past time here. Few repairs in the last few months, uh, biggest priority has been, uh, working on meter readers and meter replacements. That's, uh, taken up most of our time. While I had some small projects around town, um. All right, anything going on right now, as you see, we've got a vet truck going around town, we're getting some lines stuffed up, we should be finishing up that tomorrow. Got another excavator company to do a water repair, and, and then, uh, next week, Pain and Dole will be coming in to do, uh, West Street, Cameron, and the park. Then after that, we'll be getting ready for winter.
And what about checking all the lines for lab and all that?
Yep, that company's here right now, we'll finish up with the few that we're doing this year, and then I believe we're gonna bid out the rest, they'll probably finish them up next year.
Do we make the deadline for the, I mean, don't we have to have it done by October 14th?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the 33 we're doing right now will, uh, finish tomorrow.
Okay, good, good. That's a huge project.
It's gonna be.
Do, do they give you a report on anything that they find, or?
Yeah, I've been looking, me and Chris have been looking the whole time.
Have they found anything yet?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've, we've found, we can, no service line, just in.
Just the.
Loose necks, yeah, yeah, we've found two. And areas we thought they'd be.
Okay.
And haven't found them, some of the areas I thought they would be and hadn't been, so.
And that's been an ongoing issue, that the lines are not where they should be or where they're mapped to be, and having to find them.
Yeah, that's a struggle with any old, any village, you said, yes.
I really like seeing our DPW out with thousand rods, I think that's so cool.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Um, so are, so we gotta replace those, then?
It's, we still got like a 20-year window.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, like, we gotta replace those, and galvanize beyond that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if we find them, it's the village's responsibility to change it from main into the house.
Yeah.
If we find them.
All right.
All right, any questions for John on the board? Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Oh, and the other vet truck company in town today, they were sculpting and jetting, uh, wastewater lines, or drain lines.
Finance and Personnel Chair, Michelle.
Is there a talk about our personnel stuff?
Uh.
Okay, so the Personnel and Finance Committee met last night to look at and to update, make recommendations to update the, um, job description for the Police Chief position, which had not been updated since 2011. And the group, um, developed this document, we had some really valuable feedback from the, um, from the audience, during public comments, and the audience was wanting to be sure that as we fill this position, this important position, that we build in steps of accountability, availability, and visibility. So, so when you had a chance to look over the job description for the Chief of Police, if you have any questions, let me know. And it's like toward the back of your packet, you know?
Yeah.
And then we also worked on a timeline, and we worked on a timeline for hiring the new chief. Uh, we recommend that the job is posted on Emschols and in Antrim Review, on Indeed, on our Facebook page, and on our website, once the council approves this. We would like the application deadline to be November 14th, and we would like to do interviews on December 7th, so you're gonna have to put your Pearl Harbor, um, so, you know, plans on hold um, for December 7th. And we're hoping that the entire council would be available to help with the interviews, and, um, we hope that the council can approve a recommendation on January 8th at our regular meeting, and then we will develop an employment contract with our, um, with our, with Brian Graham, and hope to have the new person on staff by January 13th. So that's the job description, the timeline, other personnel issues. Just because of the nature of, of public office and the turnover, we discovered that in, in personnel, it's, um, something that we've gotta pay attention to and be sure that we are, um, we, we are evaluating staff. And we would like to look at doing performance evaluations for village employees, um, starting to implement those in January of 2025. And also, um, developing a comprehensive personnel file for each employee. Um, we've found that to be a deficiency in our human resources. So, and through no fault of anybody's, it's just that people come on the council, people go off the council, jobs change, people change, everything. And so establishing, um, protocols and, and, um, making sure that we're following the policies that we've already got in place. So, that's, I believe that's the finance and personnel report. Did I miss anything?
So, I don't think so. All right, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Uh, conference reports, uh, Ally went to the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association Annual Conference. Uh, what'd you learn, Ally?
Yeah, I learned about, um, a lot that's happening with our economic climate right now, with the election, it's always crazy, we know. Um, so that was nice. Um, a lot of it, I, this one is about like leadership in developing yourself to be able to find fraud, and to be able to be a better person towards the community based compared to like my workshops that I do in the spring. So this one's a little more fun, I get to network better, I've made some great connections with, uh, other treasurers I can reach out to if I need to, which is awesome, we love that. Um, yeah, any specific questions for me? Well, thank you for letting me go, next year it's in Bel Air at Trinity Creek, so I won't have to travel far, but all the downstaters do, so happy to be here.
MML conference, uh, myself and Michelle went. Uh, two of the things that I got out of it, um, one was there was a breakout session with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the Strategic Officer, Aaron McDonald was there, he's estimating that our, uh, our healthcare costs are gonna go up between 11 and 14% for next year, so we'll have to bake that into our budget. Went over somewhat counterintuitive way for the village to save money, you have, offer a higher deductible to your employees, and then that money that you save on the higher deductible with your carrier, the village then puts it into the employee's HSA plans. I'm gonna make an appointment, have him come and present, um, he does have a place, uh, on Torch Lake, so he was more than happy to come by.
Must be doing well, then.
Number two. The state is loosening brownfield designation requirements to allow more state money for cleanup of smaller sites such as the many old gas stations we have in the village. Um, it seems like the Village of Central Lake was gas station central back in the day. It does, um, so hopefully then, um, businesses that are on the, currently on the market, it'll be easier to have them sold because there'll be more availability for statewide grants for 2025. Uh, Michelle, what do you think?
Well, um, thank you for sending us to this conference, Michigan Municipal League. And so we were surrounded by other elected officials and people from the Michigan Municipal League, which is like, um, the organization for the state of Michigan that supports municipalities, townships, um, villages. And so it was a, a great learning experience and learning that many towns are struggling the same as we are to try to get their water updated, to try to get their sewer updated, um, without costing, uh, more than people can afford. And, um, so we're all struggling with the same issues, and it's definitely, um, good to not feel alone, and also to just be connected with more resources. It was, it was, um, a great opportunity for networking. I went to some, I went to, um, a workshop about artificial intelligence, and, um, and, and some of the projected benefits and doss of that. Other workshops about, um, budgeting, the services that the MML can provide, and they're just a phone call away, and they've got many employees that if we have a question about anything, they can, they can help. So, thank you for letting us attend this, we, um, I think it was, we, we brought back a lot for you, so.
Thank you, Michelle. Water Conference, Kimber.
Yeah.
Oh, I got the privilege to go down to Noll Bay and go to the Eagle Water Conference, which was uh, basically a salvation of the 50 years of the Thing of Water Act, and that's why they put this on. I got to hear speakers from, uh, the Assistant Director to the EPA, uh, the Director of Eagle, um, and the water part of Eagle was just sponsored, so he was there. Basically, uh, the need for money for all these communities for their waters is tremendous, they don't have enough, and basically, uh, we would have to do loans and grants, not through Eagle, um, because they, that usually goes to the bigger cities because of the way they score, how they score it, just the unfortunate part of it. So, when we get that, get that option, we should just negate that because we'll probably never even get one of those, a loan through Eagle. There's always gonna be new things that they're testing for, um, and of course, Michigan's probably got one of the most stringent, the EPA comes out with a level, Michigan goes above and beyond it, so basically, just keep going the way we're going, and do what we can do, and hopefully, we will make it through everything, at least.
And are they gonna start testing for plastics and stuff?
Yep, we thought this, that's the next, they're trying to decide on the levels right now. Uh, I know we do test for some, is, right now, um, but they're adding, and it's, it's, it's just gonna get worse. And, I mean, there's other materials that were used that nobody knows.
And nobody knew, you know?
And nobody knew back in the day, and so, um, we'll just keep going along and doing what we can do, um, so.
Because we got 22% of the world's fresh water surrounding us, that's, that'd be responsible.
It is, but just stuff we have to go through, so, but it was, it was good to go down there, and then, one other thing is, Eagle does have a program for homeowners that if their septic fails, um, they can get a loan through Eagle to replace that, just because it's an expense. And starting in November, if they need to hook up to municipal system, they'll be able to get a loan for that. Prior to that, November 8th, they were, it was just a, um, non-municipal system, so they were given a loan score. And I'll leave that stuff with Ally in the office, if anybody needs it.
Thank you.
All right, so, thanks, Kim. All right, number nine, correspondence, Ally, correspondence.
Yeah, so, um, both of these came in after our August meeting, so they are a little bit old. But the first one we got was a follow-up letter from the Antrim Conservation District, and it's signed by Emma Fitzgerald and Melissa Zelnak. And it says, Dear Village of Central Lake, we would like to extend the gratitude for your attention and consideration while we spoke to your board on August 14th. We hope that you enjoy Mike's book, and that you see, and we see you at future Antrim Conservation District events. To sum it up, we talked about what Antrim Conservation District had been up to this summer, and Emma's new position, as well as the MI Green Communities Coordinator. We would love to follow up in order to discuss how the program can facilitate the goals of your village. If there are any questions about topics discussed at the last meeting, please reach out at your convenience. And then we received another letter from the Central Lake District Library, it's a thank you card. It says, thank you so much for participating in our, in our Meet the People in Our Neighborhood event. The kids had a wonderful time, and we appreciated that you took the time to help us make that happen. Sincerely, Diana Huey, and that is into the relation of the DPW shutting down Maple Street for the library.
All right, thank you. Number 10, approval of bills, 10A, August. Uh, total approved, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and six cents.
I'll second.
Roll call, please, you're spending money.
Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yep.
Drake?
Yes.
Approval of bills for September, amount of ninety thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
I make a motion that we approve bills for a total of eighty thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
Roll call, spending money.
Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Drake?
12A, paving of the campground and cam. 12A, paving of the campground and carer slash west Chestnut Streets starting the week of April 14th. John, do you have anything to add to that?
I talked to Gary yesterday. He was going around marking the chest street in the park. They plan on being here Wednesday.
There was a couple of questions. Were people able to get into their driveways?
Um, let me get back to that. I'm sure it's going to be half at a time.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other old business, 12B, Michigan Endowment on Non-Motorized Trail Update, Maggie Mall and Pam Singer. Which one are you talking tonight?
I will start. My name is Maggie Mall, and I've been to here before. I'm the point of contact for the Flyer Trail, the non-motorized trail, that we, a project that we started that will go between Central Lake and Bel Air along M-88. As you know, back when we started this in 2020 and did a feasibility study just to see if it's a possible thing, and it is a possible thing. We recently received a grant for $350,000 to do pre-designing and pre-construction work. Part of that, I just want to make sure that people understand as the public, that part of that is that it will also allow us to go out and do public information meetings. This is no, this is not the end result, obviously. We get to go out and do public information meetings, get results from, or get some information from the public and, and, and all that kind of thing, and have more details about the trail to present to people. It was written, it was a very arduous application for this grant. It was written by Pam Singer and Matt Beers. Matt Clint B. here tonight. He's the project manager, and Pam is a wonderful grant writer and coordinator. So that's where we're very, very excited about that. They don't usually offer grants for pre-construction and pre-design, so this is huge in terms, in time-saving and money-saving in terms of work going forward. There will be three action items. Do you want to talk about them now, or do you want her to wait and talk about them later?
Let's just go through them as we go chronologically through here, so that way they don't go with the packet as the...
All right, then Pam will, Pam will discuss those when we get to those.
Great, great. Just right now?
No, no, he's, are you waiting for...
I'm going to wait and then do it under action item A, so Pam can present.
Yeah.
Then we're going to vote on it.
Yeah.
It'll be easier for the village council members to see as they go through their packet. 12C, hiring of the new police chief. The timeline for hiring, council, well, take it away.
Well, I've already talked about then, walked you through the timeline and walked you through the job description. And if you have any questions, let me know. The Science and Personnel Committee worked really hard on that document for you, and I'm really happy with what they should have done. Any questions, council?
Council member, take a peek at that. Same goes for the review of the job description, Michelle.
Yeah.
New business, restoration of the Ron Donaldson softball field sign. John, what happened to the sign?
Gary Johnson.
I thought we got a theft in the village. All right.
Oh, we took it down?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it needed to, it needs to be restored.
It was called... Came in one day, it was gone. I got a call. All right, so that's been solved.
So what's the new business then?
We're just announcing that the sign is going to be...
Okay, so the sign is currently being restored as we speak.
As we speak, and it's not stolen.
It's not stolen, okay.
Let's see, pickleball court presentation. Is there a representative for the pickleballers here?
Well, there's several of us.
Well, one of you?
I was not told that Carol had told us that she had given you the information.
Oh, I'm doing the presentation. All right, I will do the presentation, so.
But I can attribute that.
Yeah, fill in the gaps. How's that sound?
I'll fill in the gaps of anything, drive here what you need.
All right, so I'm just going to read Carol's synopsis of what's going on. Attached to pickleball court repair resurfacing bids. Things to consider, court usage, they're in high demand, increasing number of courts can possibly host tournaments in the future, and entry fees could offset the cost of maintenance of not only the courts but other village expenses to improve the curb appeal of our community. I was playing yesterday. There were eight people at the village courts, eight people, including Pam, at the township, at the athletic field courts. There's no less than 16 people playing at 10:00 AM. So there's obviously a demand. Number two, if we decide to keep the tennis courts, it needs to be decided, consider two options, incorporate them into the pickleball courts as pictured, or as pictured in the attached diagram, or consider repair, resurface, and reline the basketball area if you have a split court with one side tennis and one side basketball. Tennis seems to be a waning sport. Number three, we could reline the courts for pickleball only, and if needed, we could add tennis court lines in the future based on demand. There are two nice tennis courts located on M-88. Those are the ones next to the football field. And can post a sign for anyone interested in playing tennis directly on those courts. Number four, should be taken into consideration, the existing courts are the property of the villages, it's understood, although the school uses these courts for PE classes at times. Number five, when addressing the orientation of the courts, it's been noted that north to south is a vast, otherwise the courts would be facing into the sun, making plays quite difficult. Let's see. But also should be noted, there needs to be decided whether we want permanent nets for pickleball courts or removable ones. We're going to need permanent. Removable ones will last one weekend. They'll be gone. In the event it is decided or permanent nets, it eliminates the ability to put the tennis courts, to put in tennis courts due to injury. Moveable nets are opted for, or there is the consideration of vandalism and theft. We could possibly store them in a small storage building. That creates a need for a combination lock and setup and break down up the nets. Council members before you, she did a great schematic of what they're proposing. You can see that there. I'm sorry, what is your name?
My name is Jamie Smith.
All right, and then any questions you can ask? Name again?
Jamie.
Jamie, okay.
What I was going to add to this, you were talking about at 10 o'clock, you have eight players playing here and eight players playing down at the athletic fields.
Correct.
I have, in our morning group that plays in the summertime, we start at 8:30. We have as many as 22 or 24 on my email list that I send out.
Wow.
So we have sometimes as many as 12, 12 to 15 players, and that means we only can play eight at a time, and we have that many people sitting. So I think Carol's proposal had on it, like, what was it, four courts? Six courts?
Six.
Six, yes. Six courts. You know, and we start at 8:30, and then Rod's part of a group that comes in at 10, 10, 10:30.
A little later.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, you know, we, we have started at 8:04 in the past, but they changed it to 8:30 this, this year, just because of, you know, people trying to get up. But if it's a type of thing of having six, six courts, that's not going to be that much of an issue, especially in, in the tennis courts that we have now, you know, holes are bent, the nets are all sagging, they don't cook into the middle. So it's, it's not a good scenario. So it is fine. And I, you know, and with the, the aspect of pickleballs with the popularity, you know, there's going to be that demand more and more each summer, and we've been very fortunate to be able to get the, to get the courts at 8:30, 8 or 8:30. But as tourists become more, knowing availability of a viable pickleball area, that can start to be, that might have to be addressed in a paddle type of situation, in order, and then you go in in that order.
Right.
It could be something that would be looked at down the road, if, you know, and I see that coming.
I know many municipalities are swapping out their tennis courts for pickleball courts. It supports the demographic of our village, and it's true that fewer people are, are pursuing just casual tennis. More people are doing pickleball.
And you still would have the two tennis courts here, so it's not like you're totally shutting out the tennis courts.
You still have a place.
Yes.
I don't know anything about the pickleball.
Well, you should.
Something happens on the court. I see this dark gray and this light gray. What, what's that mean on the diagram?
Light gray is the existing tennis courts.
Tennis courts, yeah. Oh.
The dark gray would then, what they'd do is paint over the tennis courts, and then they would put in the six pickleball courts in place of the tennis courts.
Actually, they grinded off.
They grinded off.
Grinded off and then repainted the pickleball. Because they're much smaller than tennis courts.
Yes.
Yes, they are. Oh, okay. No, no. And I don't know if she, if she, if something was under consideration, if you were to consider this, that between the three courts on one side and three courts on the other side, that you have a fence that goes down the middle. A lot of communities have that. Because if you're playing on one court and you were to hit a long one, it's going to go over and affect the courts on the other side. There should be a middle fence that goes through the middle of it.
That would make sense, absolutely.
On that diagram, is it directionally correct saying that facing the sun?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. North, south, east, west.
Kid, would you want to say? Kid, who started, say something.
Oh, I was just going to, what, oh, like, you mentioned a fence in between the two, like a net, like a fabric net?
No, 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 like a, like a chain link fence. That's what most communities...
I think it's stuff over too, like it's smaller, or is it taller? It's taller than Bel Air's, isn't it?
It's chain, chain link, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I remember, yeah.
Yeah.
I also want to add, I talked to the superintendent, Dr. Ryan Cunningham. He was very supportive of that because the school essentially doesn't use the two tennis courts because you can only have eight people at a time on the tennis courts. Right now, the way those pickleball courts are designed, you could have six times four, 24 kids, and the average PE class size is 20 kids. And also Carol said that a lot of people have old pickleball equipment, such as paddles and balls that they would be willing to donate to the school to jumpstart the program. I know I've got a bunch of stuff laying around. So the school is in support of it. I also talked to our accountant. I emailed him, and I'll report by even now. So I asked him about the general fund, how we would pay for this, approximately $36,000. Hello, your general fund has a balance of approximately $460,000, so you could absorb that cost as long as there weren't many other items that were not expected this year. Sewer and water have their own funds, so I don't see anything that would be really catastrophic that would prevent us from pursuing this if that's indeed we want the directional water to go, so.
And we would aim for spring of 2025?
That's what the quote says.
Let me add, that's what we were hoping.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, we would just put it in the budget, but we would vote on it and then get the bid in for next year. Let's see, yeah. Yeah, Henco, due to prior contracts, 2024, no guarantee to be able to complete this bid in 2024. And then the other one, Grant Travers. But it's too late this time of year anyway. Don't think they'd get it in.
So we'd have to contract them for spring?
Yeah.
Because you want to get done.
Yeah. So that's the presentation. Council member, do you have any other questions for the folks that came out tonight, pickleball courts? All right, I'm going to let the council members look this whole thing over, and we'll put it as an action item for November's meeting. Sound good?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for showing up tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Now we got some action items.
Now we got some action items. All right, 14, action item, approve the Flyer, Central Lake to Bel Air Non-Motorized Trail Board as the official decision makers regarding the project planning, development, and execution. Ally, take it away.
Sure, the Flyer, Non-Motorized Trail from Central Lake to Bel Air has created a board. Since we've got this $350,000 grant that came in, now we need to do RFPs and start our work to do the pre-engineering of the trail. And there's a lot of decisions that need to happen. We need to streamline those decisions. So we're coming to you and asking Village of Central Lake to approve the Flyer as a decision-making body, where we would, the village would continue to be a fiduciary for the project, but the board would make decisions and report back to the Village of Central Lake on the project status and make sure we're hitting all the outcomes that you're expecting.
How many people are going to be on your board?
Right now, five is what we're thinking.
I have the wording, shall we?
Yeah.
Looking at official wording, right? I hereby move that the Village of Central Lake officially recognizes the Flyer, Central Lake to Bel Air Non-Motorized Trail Board, as the designated decision-making body for all matters related to the development and management of the Central Lake to Bel Air Non-Motorized Trail Project.
I'd like to make a motion to approve...
I just made a motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion. I'll second it, thank you. Roll call, please, Ally.
Yep, Ring?
Well, actually, I had a question.
I'm sorry, I apologize, mate.
This is a decision-making body. Is it decision-making regarding finances and paying bills too?
Well, it will, will create RFPs and will have a bid process. Those bids will come in, and we'll identify the lowest cost bid and to do the project. We'll look at those engineering firms that are in the local area, so, you know.
So who approves the expenditure funds?
The expenditure, it would be the, the board would approve the expenditure now...
The village council or the Flyer?
The Flyer would approve those, but we wouldn't ever go over what our budget is. So we're receiving $350,000 for, from the grant, so that's the money we would be able to use.
Okay, all right, I'm set.
Michelle motioned, you seconded.
I seconded.
Should we do a roll call? Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
14B, approve that the Village of Central Lake will serve as capacity fiduciary, providing the necessary financial oversight and support for the project while empowering the trail board to make operational decisions for the non-motorized trail. We talked about this at the last meeting. A municipality has to be the fiduciary, so we will have an account opened up at, are we at Walden?
Yep, we already voted for that, and the account is open.
So we're already up and running on that one, essentially.
Yep.
Questions regarding that? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the village to serve as capacity fiduciary, including necessary financial oversight support for the project while empowering the trail board to make operational decisions for the non-motorized trail.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Drake?
C, approval. Approved communication and reporting protocols will be established to ensure that the village council is kept informed about the progress and changes and developments related to the non-motorized trail project. Pam, do you have anything to add to this?
As we proceed with the RFPs and as we learn new things about what it will take to put this trail in, we will report back to you. But we want to also collaborate with you, so if there's specific things that you would like to be updated on in those reports, we can do that. We can come to the village meetings. We could put these reports in writing for you. We're really here to support whatever needs that you hope to have as far as information from the project.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion to approve the communication and reporting protocols will be established to ensure that the village council is kept informed about the progress, challenges, and developments related to the non-motorized trail project. Roll call please.
Yep, Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Drake.
Thank you both for all your hard work on the trail. Hopefully, it will be done by July 10th. It's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long process. C, D, approve the easement release for Dennis J. Devlin's property located at 7832 Maple Street. Parcel number 05-42-010-092-00. Ellie, can you fill everybody in on what's kind of going on there, other than it's very old?
Yeah, this one's actually kind of interesting. So apparently, back in like the 70s, the board tried to create easements on a whole list of properties. They went to the court. The court denied it. However, they still took it to the register of deeds and it got approved there. So it's very interesting. So this is the first easement because this person's trying to sell their home and they found it. I'm guessing later on, we're gonna have to release the rest. Peter Wenling's working on that paperwork, but this is the one we have now. The easement should never have been recorded, so now we're just reversing that action.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the easement lease for the Devlin property located at 7832 Maple Street. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. E, approve of the police chief job description. That was what the personnel finance committee meant yesterday to go over. And they have brought it to us this evening. If members of the board got any questions, you can ask Michelle. She is the personnel finance chair.
There's a variety of reports that's reported that need to be made to maintain a police department. Is that listed in here?
Bill, what are you saying?
I think it's pretty obvious.
Where is this report? I'm skipping through it and I'm not seeing it real quick.
It would be. It would be in, I think it's embedded in several different spots. Develop and maintain department policies, procedures, and practices to ensure compliance under key responsibilities, leadership, and management. Develop and maintain department policies, procedures, and practices to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. So that would include all matters of reporting. It's updated, for sure.
And Michelle, I see we changed the emergency response. That court time change.
I think we reworded it. Yeah, we reworded it to be. I don't see that.
You had me take out the 24/7 in the working, under working conditions on the last page.
And I think that we decided that under working conditions, it would be both indoor and outdoor. A variety of indoor and outdoor work settings. But to the one we should recover court as part of the working condition.
Office work and field work doesn't cover that?
Well.
Asking in relation to our conversation earlier?
Just under working conditions, we're talking about requires both office work and field work. And some feedback from the public comments last night was that we need to be sure it's specified that would include court time and time related prosecuting attorney's office. And I.
We would have it under collaboration with our agency, six, bullet point three. Serve as part of representative legal matters court appearance as inter-agency meeting. So that's probably there. So you recovered on that one.
So by the time we get to working condition, it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty well understood that all of those settings are part of the job.
So we're set then. Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? I'd like to make a motion to approve the police chief job description that's before you. Roll call please.
Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yep.
Drake?
Yes. F, approve of the police chief hiring timeline. Michelle already went over it.
So we'll get the job posted within the next couple of days on all of the outlets that potential candidates will be checking. We'll give, and so when they check, when they find the job posting, they'll click to our website and they'll see the job description. And then at the end of it will be how they can, what step they need to take to apply next, which is on the bottom of that, of the job description included here. And then we will, we'll we'll review the applications through law enforcement and through personnel and finance and select the best candidates for the position, the top three to five. Then we'll do the interviews on December 7th. And then take the best candidate and do comprehensive background check and reference check, employment check, because this is an important position. And it's important that we take our time and do our due diligence. And it might not be the easiest process, but it's the right process. And then we will be in position to approve, we hope, the best candidate at our regular meeting on January 8th. And then in collaboration with the candidate and us and our legal counsel, develop the employment contract. So we hope to have our person in by January 13th.
End up, he will apply online, you said?
They will have, they will, no, they will apply, I believe via the post office. But all the information will be online.
Okay, Michelle.
Yeah.
In our ad, when we put it out, all these, are we putting any salary, like a starting?
It's negotiable and commensurate with experience.
Okay.
The one, I mean, so when we look at what kinds of potential candidates we may have in collaborating with the sheriff's department throughout this and other law enforcement, there's thought that there will be candidates who are newly retired from other police positions, because you can retire with your 30 years barely, you know, you're still 48 and in the prime of your life. And so they might want to move up here. And so the salary might not be so important to them because the pension is nice. But the benefits are not nice for retired police personnel. And so they may want to negotiate, you know, more benefit package.
Benefit heavy versus salary, right.
So we want to be flexible.
Okay.
And according to the, and of course, you know, staying within our budget and obviously. And that will, that will be some advantageous timing because we start working on our budget. It's in January and February. And so the timing of it will be, will be good.
It says the chief's first day will be January 13th, 2025. I assume that there's like a bill for that.
Yeah, we just, we're hopeful.
Yeah.
We're cautiously optimistic. Yes. As in all of this, you know, the timeline for the interviews and all of that, you know, if we have a blizzard, we're going to have to modify our, you know, but this is the desired timeline, if that works.
All right, I'd like to make the motion to approve the police chief hiring timeline. I need to second Kip. Roll call please.
Ring?
I have to have public comment till the end, but thank you.
Ring?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes. Let's see, G, approve of keeping seasonal and annual site rates the same rate as the 2024 camping season.
And that's for the 2025 camping season?
25, yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'll make a motion to keep the seasonal and annual site rates the same rate as the 2024 camping season for 2025.
I'll second. All in favor of approval of keeping the seasonal and annual site rates the same as the 2024 camping season, say aye.
Aye.
H, approve of trick-or-treat hours between 5:00 and 8:00 PM on October 31st, 2024.
Out of everything we've done here tonight, this is a very important for many little trick-or-treaters. And so it's important that everybody know what the hours are and that we are trick-or-treating on Halloween. Not the day before, not the day after Halloween.
I assume you'll be making a motion?
Not me. I move that the Village of Central Lake establish official trick-or-treat hours on October 31st, 2024, being from 5:00 to 8:00 PM Eastern Daylight Savings Time because we've switched back after.
All right. Let's do a roll call. This is important.
Ring? Chapman?
Yeah.
Fox?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And Drake.
Yes. Public comment, Walt. Thank you for your question.
Okay. My name is Walt Vidal. For those of you who don't know me, my wife and I own a rental down here by the bridge. And I don't normally get involved in local politics, but I'm here tonight to respectfully request at some point in time that you rehire Scott Barrett, the chief of police in Central Lake. I've worked as a prosecutor downstate for 33 years since I was born and raised up here. I also was a college professor in Detroit and most of my students were Detroit police officers. I taught criminal law. I also was a court magistrate down in Oakland County for a period of time. I moved back up here and this is where I want to be. But my opinion is that Scott Barrett is well qualified for this position. He lives right here in this area. And I feel very comfortable that he is rehired for the protection of everybody here and also my son, daughter-in-law, grandkids live in this area too. I'm thinking about the future of our community. My business is down by the park, as you know, and sometimes we have problems down there. People on drugs and stuff like that. But anyway, thank you for listening to me. I'm just trying to do the right thing here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
I won't be here next month. I'll be traveling overseas. But Ellie, I think you record this, don't you? Yeah, so I'll be able to listen to recording and hopefully have an article for
So you'll be able to tune in from overseas.
Yeah, I know, pretty cool. I'll probably email you and you can send me a link. Is that a good way to go about it?
Yeah, yep, and it's always on, I stream live on our YouTube channel.
Oh, it's streamed live?
Yes.
Oh.
But can't you go back?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, but I want to watch live. Yeah, it's six hours ahead. Okay, brilliant.
Oh, I was gonna keep you awake.
Any other public comment? Give her, no?
I agree with your semesters. Former city chief is as good as I've ever seen. He's very committed to the community. He was very thorough. And I think that we should give consideration for rehiring him. It's, I can see the, there was many reasons why we would have to go through the hiring process, but I don't think it should be a deterrent, you know, that it should be, we should encourage him to do it. Rehire. It would mean a new contract for him if he, if he decided. I think we should consider all that he did while he was here. He was, he was absolutely perfectly suited for the position. He was available all the time at the park. And that's not true with a lot of people. He lived in, he's still a young property. He lives here in the community.
And so, like to clear, so he left us for a new job.
He did.
Okay. And he didn't, I mean.
It didn't work out.
Okay.
It wasn't as he thought it was gonna be. He's not interacting with people. He's an office worker. That's not what he had in mind, so. He would like to get back in touch with people and he liked, he loved working at the school. And that was, and so I think we should give him special consideration.
And he can apply?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, girl, appreciate it. Anybody else, public comment? All right, close public comment, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, I'll second, all in favor of adjournment? Thank you, thank you all, the audience, for showing up tonight.
I know you're very busy.
I'm not going to pay any attention to anything that works.
I'm just going to give you this write back.